Myself.
Okay. So hello, everybody. And welcome to another installment of the Sustainability Commission. Jan is going to do. Right? Yes, sorry. The land acknowledgement.
Yeah, let me read the statement. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Just a few notes before we begin. The members of the public who are joining the meeting via a computer device or phone. Please be advised that you have been muted and when. You have been muted. Commissioners, as a panelist, you can mute or unmute your video and mic at your discretion, though please mute yourself when you're not speaking to avoid any background noise. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting. Please raise your virtual hand now to join the speakers queue in one of two ways. For those doing the meeting on a computer laptop or other device, click once on the blue hand icon. For those listening to the meeting on a phone, press star nine. We will lower hands as speaker are as speakers are called upon. When the public comment begins, we will announce your name and unmute your microphone. We'll have two minutes to speak after which your microphone will again be muted. Regarding the chat and A chat and Q and A functionality of Zoom. Please note that attendees will not be able to use these features. Commissioners, we ask that you do not utilize the chat function for any purpose other than technological assistance. As attendees will not have access to these conversations. And lastly, in accordance with the passage of HV four two one two, this meeting will be recorded and posted to the Sustainability Commission website. As always, please feel free to contact the Sustainability Commission if there's testimony you were not able to provide or wish to get to us in a different format. And with that, I turn the meeting back over to Chair Devon.
Thank you. Okay, now land acknowledgement from Jan.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I apologize for not having gotten this information out to folks ahead of time and it didn't go off via email, right? So I will send you because I had to put it together. There's some links, so. Back up just for a minute for people who aren't familiar with us instead of. Creating us a standard land acknowledgement statement, the commission has decided that we share every month and we pass around it and each commissioner takes a turn. Bringing something of interest related to the American culture or information that. Is that people have been done a real wide range of things. I'm just going to talk about events that are going on here. Once. First of all, in Eugene, there is a monthly Native American arts and crafts makers market, which is just resuming in April. It happens every first. Sunday of every month from April through December at the farmer's market. So that was this this month was the first time. So I'm personally interested and excited to go check that out and that's something we can. We meet people here in our own community and see what they're making. Providing, so that's cool. Throughout the summer, earlier in the year, I just happened to have picked up these. Guides called Oregon Indian Country that have some basic information about all the tribes. In Oregon and or the. The organizations. And the and events and things that are going on with them. So throughout the summer in particular, there are a lot of powwows and other events that are going on. And I had highlighted a few for you in this email. I'll just go ahead and send it even one again tonight so you all have the go links. But in. May, there's one at Whitman College in Wawaala. In June, there's one in Portland, Seattle, there's one in July that they're usually day all day or multi day events. And they're pretty interesting. So there's lots of opportunities if you're out and about enjoying the summer to get to. Learn more about. Native American communities in our state.
Thanks, Jan. Um, and I think what she could do is send the links and they could be. Added to the minutes and then we could have the minutes amended when we. As a through, right? Next time, so they could still go out.
Oh, and I what I wanted to mention was I did. Provide these out to people earlier in the year because I happened to get them. I don't have any extras now, but they are available at the Convention and Visitors Association Cascade Lakes. Yeah, Eugene Cascade. There you go. If you're interested in.
Thank you. And then just as a reminder, I know it says in the agenda, but May is Laura and June. All right, so now we need to review and approve. The agenda in the March. Meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments or want to make a motion to?
I'll move to.
Second.
Next. All right. All in favor?
Am I supposed to abstain if I wasn't here?
Hi.
Oh, okay, approves.
Yeah, I don't see.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um. Now it is time for a public comment. Danielle?
Yeah, so usually we do and some persons, I would you would go first and then we'll move to anyone who wants to give a public comment online. And then we'll move to. There were two letters that were received that I will read. We'll go in that order. And if anyone online wants to give public comments, please raise your hand now to get in the queue. Okay, all right, come on up. And my. You know, keep timed. Perfect. People get two minutes and you will cut you off.
All right. Yeah, just start waving at me. All right. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tiffany Edwards and I I do the policy work for the Eugene Chamber of Commerce. I also serve on the planning commission, so I'm in my sixth year on planning commission and I'm also in my sixth year on E-TAC, the Envision Eugene Technical Advisory Committee.
Good to see you in a room.
Yes, Dennis, thank you. And but I'm not here in to speak on behalf of either of those groups, but I just kind of wanted to. Share why I'm here tonight. I'm really the the chamber in particular and the business community is really interested in one of the projects that you all are hearing. From planning staff tonight on, which is the public health. Public health standards. And it's a it's a project that we have some concerns about and I just kind of wanted to share that with you all. The. The the concerns are around the use of the land use code and in as a means to regulate business. And I also kind of wanted to share in in context, this flyer that the city of Eugene has done and. Our logos, the Eugene Chamber and onward, which is our economic development arm of the chamber, have partnered with the city of Eugene. To make a legislative ask for ten and a half million dollars from the state of Oregon from the legislature. And that is specifically to develop this area, these industrial areas that we have that are. That are not ripe for development, but we're hoping that they will be with this ask for industrial or for infrastructure. So money for infrastructure to develop this. And so some of the concerns that have come out. Specifically around even just the conversation about this this project is how is that going to impact our ability to attract businesses to this area that we know or you know, they're they're in those same zones. These are I two, E one. Areas of the community. So I'm here to listen to your conversations tonight. I'm really curious about how you are your perception of how the land use code. It may or may not be a tool to be utilizing in the process to. To what type how we want to regulate business. So that's why I'm here. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thanks, Jan.
Okay, it looks like no one. Joining virtually wants to give testimony. Um. So I will read. What we have. Um. Just. Okay. Take like, let me bring in some minutes, two minutes. So. Okay, the first one is from Harvey Gale. He represents the Oregon Heart Patio and Barbecue Association. So, Dear Eugene Sustainability Committee, I am unable to testify at your meeting, but ask that staff or commission member read this testimony to the group. We read the draft Clean and Reliable Backup Energy Systems handout with great interest and grave concern. Great interest as the leaders in providing safe, reliable and affordable biomass heat for Oregon Oregonians. We appreciate your help in promoting health, safety and resilience by sharing information on the benefits of EPA certified wood and pellet stoves. We encourage you to make that information, the information on flyer more actionable by listing the specific. Potential tax credit link on the flyer with the link here. Grave concern, there are two significant errors on your flyer with regard to gas fireplaces. At the top of your flyer, you state that many gas appliances do not work without electricity. This is a false statement. In fact, many modern gas state. Gas inserts and all gas log sets work very well. A small battery ignition that comes with standard installation allows the fireplace to work when the power is out. Your flyer emits important consumer information regarding the benefits and availability of gas fireplaces, which are reliable, affordable, easy to use and emit very few emissions. Additionally, an incentive is available available for them in Oregon. According to the Energy Trust of Oregon, gas fireplaces burn with up to an eighty percent efficiency rating, meaning almost no pollution. Highly efficient gas fireplaces can heat up to a thousand square feet of living space at low cost. Additionally, the Energy Trust has compiled a significant list of more gas fireplace benefits here with a link. If the commission would like to hear from one of our local heart dealers in Eugene. Or see live samples of biomass stoves and gas fireplaces would be happy to help arrange this. Our dealers know their Eugene customers very well and help help you understand the firsthand positive experience. Of people with these appliances. Please confirm receipt and understanding of this inquiry and please let me know your next steps in correcting the flyer you have created. Please contact me.
You did it almost perfectly. I'm going to do this a different way. And it's going to let you know on all on its own. Just to do the next one.
Setting a timer.
Okay.
Texting my mother.
Okay, this is a letter from Northwest Natural. From David Vanderhagen, Community and Government Affairs Manager. Dear Sustainability Commission, Northwest Natural has reviewed the draft document authored by the Clean and Reliable Backup Energy Committee of the Sustainability Commission entitled Clean and Reliable Backup Energy Systems for Homes and Businesses. And we are concerned that there has not been enough public or technical review of its content. Natural gas appliances allow residents to shelter in place and can allow neighbors or family to join them during power outages. In extreme cold weather, this level of resilience is becoming increasingly necessary with the changing climate. While natural gas furnaces and gas ovens do not work in a power outage unless connected to a generator, the natural gas system offers many appliance options that work when the power is out, including hot water heaters, fireplaces, many gas stoves and generators. And a consumer can ask their local appliance dealer if they want to ensure they are selecting an appliance with this feature. Northwest Natural learned from our Eugene customers just how critically important the reliability of gas appliances. Is. Please read a sample of their stories and lived experiences for yourself. Minor corrections were made for clarity as indicated with brackets. And. Senses were bolded for emphasis. Here are some quotes. During the 2016 ice storm in Eugene, our home was without electricity for four days. Thank goodness for our natural gas fireplace with backup battery starter. It was our only heat source and the reason we didn't have to pay for a hotel during this difficult time. Another quote. A couple of years back during a very freezing cold January evening, the E web electricity went out. We have a gas furnace which would not work without electricity and have an electric stove. Although after this, I have put in an emergency bypass whereby I can run the electrical part of the furnace with a standby gas generator and use the furnace. After three hours, the temperature in the house was in the fifties and no word of when the electricity would come back. Try to get. Okay, here we go. That's it. Yep, the letter has been sent to the commissioners. Automatically ready, so. Okay.
So I would like to. Make a comment about the that the last two. Public comments. Just to. Be clear and have it be in the minutes that the purpose of the memo. Was to show. Backup energy sources that are alternatives to fossil fuel. That's the whole purpose of the menu. So or the memo, sorry, said menu. So that I just want that said, that's why gas things are not mentioned in it because that's not what it's about. The other thing I wanted to mention that both letters. Addressed. Is that. While. The the statement that many gas appliances do not work without electricity actually is true. That's not a false statement. What is not said is that there are some that also work. Without electricity. But that was not also the purpose of the memo was about backup and a reason to. To have it. So. I just wanted to throw that out there. Make those statements that that it is not untrue that there are many appliances.
Should shouldn't we save this to the talking about when we talk about the the letter?
No, this was just a statement I wanted to make in response to the public comment.
I just want to say because a bunch came up, so I just wanted to like not have a false.
Right, this isn't a discussion. This is just if you'd like to make a comment about the public comment. And like if the people were here, missionaries would not be able to have an exchange with the people who made the public comment. You'd be able to make a statement.
I have a process question. Okay, yes, so I guess that's what I'm trying to understand because you're making a comment in response to the public comments, but the rest of the board is not to make.
No, you can make a comment.
Okay.
It's just not a discussion. Like we're not, I'm not gonna, you're gonna say something that I'm not going to respond back to you.
Well, a question I have is there was an offer to make a presentation on some of the technology, which seems like maybe a valuable engagement. From subject like technology experts that were not. And I'm I'm. Wondering where there is there an opportunity to take some of the requests or recommendations at the proper time in the meeting. To take them up on that offer. Where. Is that at the end for discussion or?
Anything else something for the commission to decide? I mean. If they want to hear that presentation.
We'd have to bring it up as an agenda item.
It would have to be, it would go need to go on the work plan or it would need to come up during a committee. It could be.
Well, it's built off the work plan of the letter. So I mean, it is part of that project that's in the work plan. That's true. It's just.
I was gonna say that in response to part of the first letter about having more information accessible about. The wood stoves that. And maybe considering the presentation that was offered, that might be something that we should discuss with the Clean and Energy. Backup committee because that's the one who drafted the that that was our focus. So I don't know if we have many sessions left, but. I think that would it seems like we might want to discuss some of these responses in that committee and. Formulate. I don't think we any and one of us can like individually just respond to like that request, but. Oh. Let's see. Yeah.
Jan?
I was just gonna say to thank the people for their testimony and their input and it's very helpful and glad people are paying attention. And say that we I think we should discuss the feedback and what we want to do about it, but either at later in the meeting when we talk about this handout and or at a subsequent meeting rather than getting into.
Alexi? Do you wanna?
There we are. I'll just note that. As the chair of the committee that put this memo out, I'm happy to look this over for factual errors or emissions. And we can get into that later. We can also get into that during meeting of that committee. The, I think you make a good point, Devin, that the purpose of the memo for the report, the purpose of the document. Is to talk about systems that are not powered by fossil fuels. So there's a little bit of preamble introduction about fossil fuels, many, et cetera. Yes, many do, many don't. Sure. And I'm happy to get into that at the committee level, but the purpose of this document, I think it's worth reinforcing is is about things that. Are not related to gas fireplaces. Or other fossil fuel burning systems. So. It seems like the the comments are concerned about basically the preamble. To the document and not really about the purpose of the document. So I'm I'm happy to make sure that there are no factual errors. But I want to maintain the purpose of this document to be. About. Non fossil fuel backup energy systems, which is which is what it's focused on. So we can get into that in committee or potentially later in this meeting. But I do, I'll echo that. I appreciate the comment. I'm glad to see people are actually reading things we're putting out.
Right, anyone else? Okay. That leads us right into our presentations.
Just one little point of order. Could I ask? Me and whoever to. Shoot up there again, how how many other people we have listening in tonight? I didn't get a chance to see.
I did. There's three.
Oh.
Matt Weiler, David Vanderhagen, Matthew Chrysler.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stuart Warren, Associate Planner on the Community Plan and Design Team. It's nice to be back with you all again. Last time I was here, I talked about the compact development urban design chapter of the Conference of Plans. Tonight, I'm going to be talking to you about the Community Health Chapter. On the agenda for this evening is to give you a quick overview of what a conference of plan is. It's just a refresher. Then I'm going to talk about some of the draft goals and policies in this chapter right now. And then we're going to have time for clarifying questions and then some discussion. So as a quick reminder here, what is a conference of plan? If you'd like to learn more than what I'm gonna dive into tonight, we have a great video up on our Engage UG website. That link is on the screen. It's also in your packet. So the Conference of Plan guides the city and its land use planning for future growth within their growth boundary. Is informed by years of community engagement through Envision Eugene. Each chapter has a series of goals that are help articulate the aspirations of the community. This chapter also has a series of policies and those policies help provide a consistent force of action that move us towards attainment of those goals. And lastly, once those policies are adopted, they guide city staff. And formally propose changes to development regulations, long range plans and financial decisions. What I want you to really take away from that is it starts with the community vision and it funnels down to these policies that guides that. Okay, so let's talk about the Community Health Chapter. Before we do, I want to just. Highlight, these are still in draft form, so they're likely to change over the next year or so based off of input we receive from people like you. And before we dive into actually what these are, let's talk and let's just brainstorm a little bit about like, what does community health mean to you? Let's take about a minute to do that. Just throw out ideas.
What does community help me?
Yeah.
To me? Access to services affordably when needed in a timely manner.
Having the conditions. Available so that you can live a healthy life. So. Healthy, clean air, water. Awesome.
Anyone else?
Vaccination programs.
Vaccination programs.
I mean, access to open space or places to go outside.
Great.
Diversity of jobs and opportunities for current workforce, future workforce.
What else?
Epidemiological support for for folks that. Might get diseases or pass them on.
Great. Okay, those are all awesome. And this chapter covers a lot of those topics. We only really cover tops, though the land use system can touch. So we're staying out of a lot of the other stuff and just really focus on what we can impact or what we should be looking at during the chapter. The chapter currently has three draft goals and twenty two draft policies. And it guides the city's efforts to planning for future growth and development that provides a healthy, natural built environment, enhances access and opportunity. And fosters community safety and belonging. The first draft goal is on healthy, natural and built environment. And the goal is to provide a healthy, natural built environment throughout Eugene so community members can have access to clean air and water, experience the nature in their daily lives. And live in places that are protected from environmental contamination. Under this draft goal, there are currently nine draft policies and I'm just going to highlight a few of those tonight. The first draft policy is titled Environmental Justice. And this policy directs the city to plan for all people, including underserved community groups. We're developing, implementing and enforcing local environmental laws, regulations and policies. The next policy is titled Separation and Uses. And this policy says that when the city is re-designating land, the city shall avoid designating residential and industrial lands adjacent to each other. And the last policies in this section that I want to highlight with you tonight is titled Local Air, Water Quality and Noise Standards. And this policy really just directs the city to continue enforcing local air, water quality, noise standards. There's a lot more policies in this section. Some of the topics that they cover are coordinating with regulatory agencies, urban tree canopy, green streets and parks and transportation planning. The next draft goal is equitable access and opportunity. And the goal is to enhance opportunities for all community members to improve their quality of life through access to affordable and safe housing, food, employment and public facilities and services. Under this draft goal, there are currently six draft policies. The first policy I'm gonna highlight with you tonight is titled Social Equity. And this policy promotes fair treatment, access, opportunity and advancement for people most burdened by past and current injustice by eliminating eliminating barriers to inclusion and integration. The next policy I want to highlight is called Access to Social Services and Healthcare. Last time we were here, we talked a little bit about some of your concerns about accessing healthcare in Eugene. So I wanted to highlight this one one with you. And this policy supports equitable access to social services and healthcare through coordination and planning efforts. And the last policy I'm gonna highlight is on childcare and early childhood learning. This policy calls for increasing the number of childcare facilities throughout Eugene by reducing regulatory barriers and allowing childcare in more areas. There's a few more policies in this section and I feel and I encourage you to take a look at them. Those are in your packet and then those handouts I gave to you tonight as well. The last draft goal is titled Equitable Access and Opportunity. And the goal is to foster a safe. And inclusive city where all people, including those from underserved community groups, feel a sense of safety, connection and belonging. Underneath this draft goal, there's four draft policies. The first one. Is titled Gathering Places and Social Connectivity. And the goal here for the policy says to encourage community gathering spaces throughout the city so that everyone has access to those spaces. The next one's on community stability. And this policy directs the city to make it or to support plans that reduce involuntary displacement for local businesses. The third policy in this section is titled Emergency Shelters. And this policy really just directs the city to make it easier to site emergency shelters, including shelters for people experiencing homelessness and people sheltering from natural disasters. And the last policy I'm gonna highlight with you tonight is called Clean and Safe Neighborhoods. And this policy encourages design practices that increase visibility, lighting and programming to encourage cleaner and safer neighborhoods. Next steps for this chapter, we have a survey out right now and so we encourage you to give us our feedback and that's open to general public as well. So we want to highlight that for everyone. And people can find that survey on our Engage UG page, which is up on the screen right now. Throughout the year, staff will be working with the general public, a community advisory panel and other groups to ensure a broad range of needs and priorities. Are included and reflected in these draft goals and policies. And then later this year, staff will be refining the draft goals and policies as necessary with the City of Eugene and Lane County Planning Commissions, City Council and Board of Commissioners. And that's what I have for tonight. Are there any clarifying questions?
Help me. This is a land use document.
Right.
So there's a lot of. Sameing of words like encourage, fair, again, a lot of emotional words, you know, environmental justice is a hard thing to. Enforce from the land use. What was it you did? So help me understand how a lot of. How does that language that's very values based move into something that is kind of a clear and objective land use? Legal language.
Once again, these policies are directing planning staff. So a lot of how I respond to your question is about directing how staff do our work.
Okay.
So it's not, it wouldn't provide necessarily a legal avenue or like a land use specific development. So it's not, it wouldn't provide necessarily a legal avenue or like a land use specific development regulation. It would be more about like how planning staff are coordinating.
Correct staff does.
Correct.
Okay. We heard a public comment from the woman, forgot your name, sorry, about concerns from the business community around like a healthy release zone, that kind of thing. And I don't know a lot about how this has played out in other communities, but from my, like where I sit, it would seem like it might make businesses feel better about coming somewhere, knowing that the city has made sure that they're not going to have these conflicts with the communities they are cited in. And I was just wondering if you know about other places where they've done that, like used land used to help try to prevent these. I mean, their conflict, but they're also like health implications among the people that live there. Do you know other places?
It's a really great, great question, and I'm going to let my colleagues talk about that during their presentation later tonight.
Okay. So you're not, this is, they're going to present about what you talked.
They're going to present on the public.
Got it, sorry.
I have a couple of different questions. Um, to verify this, the comprehensive plan, when you raise the land use code, it has to be consistent with this, and if folks feel like it's not consistent, they can get cranky and take it to the toilet. Is that right? My understanding might be like that.
That's correct, yes.
Um. And this was primarily focused on new development, changes to the code, things like that. So it's, you know, we've had a lot of commentary both about residential that has was historically cited here, railroads, industrial zones, the challenges that's producing, and this this won't necessarily address those challenges because it's really about where we put things in the future. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, this document is really looking into the future for the city.
And then there are a couple of these that I'm having trouble conceptualizing how they would play out in a land use context. Um, one of the, for example, the community stability one. We're just talking about writing rents and evictions, which typically isn't really controlled by land use. Um, and the, for example, the actual access to social services and healthcare. I can see that like vaguely and making it easier for hospitals to get built and having, you know, allowed use in more places. But could you help me in a chance some of those ones that are more less land use, like it's a less obvious connection? Like, how would those get?
It's a really great question, Councilor. Thank you for it. And it's one we've struggled with a lot with this chapter in particular, is trying to find that nexus. That's why a lot of these policies are written using that kind of more lofty and vague language, like encourage or coordinate with other agencies or departments to try to make sure that some of those things occur in the future. For example, with the healthcare example, we can look at ways in the land use code to make it easier to cite future hospitals, for example.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, I think so. And I'm guessing there might be some process things you could implement in code regarding notification and things like that, too.
Correct. Yeah, if we were to make any of those changes, it would go through a full public process.
Any other questions? Anybody online, Lexi, or anything?
Then I have some questions for you all.
Let's see, Jan.
So my questions for you tonight are, are these the right goals for community health? Do the draft policies move us towards our goals? Is there anything that you felt that was missing or that you would like to change?
Just a comment, and it's more of a comment than a question. And it's about appreciating that there are goals to to correct the flaws that exist in the status quo. I've been in, you know, Framsong neighborhood. I've gone door to door in that neighborhood, and I was surprised it was part of the city I lived in. I mean, I know about the toxins and the health overlay issues that have arisen there. So I appreciate the corrective effort. And I guess one of the questions, there have been health overlay proposals. How would these kinds of health goals operate in a different way than establishing zones that intend to create healthy residential?
How they operate differently?
Yeah.
I don't think they necessarily would. I think that our plans would be to continue using like separation and uses as as one way in which we can build a better community in the future.
Okay, thank you. So I think you answered this already, but if I want a shelter for unhoused people and daycare center, we're just going to encourage it. Are there any more specifics? Or is it just going to be, I think you answered, no, there won't be specifics. We're just going to encourage it.
That's a great question and a good point as well. The Conference of Plan is very high level. It doesn't get us down to that that level of detail like you would find in the land use code necessarily, so we have intentionally kept it high level.
Courtney.
Yeah, I think a comprehensive plan does have impact on existing development in areas where that development is changing or expanding or modifying. And so I think having this not be silent on that, because that's going to create real pressure points, probably the fastest, would be valuable because I think that's where existing humans are. And that would be, I know you said it doesn't, but I I believe that to be not quite true, just because a comprehensive plan sets on any change to it, right?
Would you repeat or restate what you're saying?
So when us, and when an existing site within a developed area of the city comes in to make a change to their site, maybe a business expands or adds a use or modifies their existing operations, the city's comprehensive land use plan, along with the other regulatory plans, will wake up and will require that business to respond to the newest set of of goals and policies. And so that's a perfect example of things like the neighborhoods we're talking about that find themselves in a modern moment of kind of pressure between all who are living and working there. So when we talk about these goals that are kind of lofty and they they lack tangible nexus because they're envisioning these outer fringes aren't anything today, that's an easier thing to contemplate than the real version, which will be a pre-existing site next to a pre-existing home going through a change.
So unless those changes were to happen through the development code, the conference plan wouldn't necessarily be triggered. Right? So the existing uses should still continue to be able to do what they need to do within the the land use code itself. It's when we make changes in land use codes when it triggers conference.
Or when the site adds additional uses to their activity.
Not necessarily. If they go to change like their zoning or something, then that's correct.
Laura. Um, I think these are the right goals for the community, and I thought, I yeah, I'm happy to see like how comprehensive they are and thinking about all the different ways to make Eugene healthier. I think it's, um, maybe the economic health component is missing. And I think about that especially as we talk about the employment lands and the inventories. So I do think that's part of community health. And I know there is an economic chapter, I'd assume, because that's normal, but.
That's correct. Thank you for pointing that out. There is a chapter already adopted on economic development, and it covers a lot of those topics.
They should talk.
They should, and we've also tried to keep them separate at the same time, right? Because we're trying to keep things somewhat organized. It's just for ease of reference, but that that economic development chapter is already adopted, and it's available for you to take a look at.
Yeah.
So appreciate it for the feedback.
Myself. Um, I agree with, I mean, I know you're saying there is a chapter that's adopted, but I think that piece is like one of the like with transportation, those two things will make the other things fall into place, right? Because without jobs and money to do all of this, and also ways to get to and from that part of Eugene, there's none of these things are really going to be able to come together in my personal view.
I'd be back.
Right, because then it just becomes like an out, an excerpt, or you know, it doesn't feel incorporated into the city.
The nice thing about the Conference of Plan is it has all of these different elements in it, and eventually, once we finish the third phase, if we haven't started yet, we'll have chapters on pretty much all of the different aspects, and they will talk to each other. And we spent a lot of time going through all the existing policies and then our new draft policies as well, making sure that we don't have overlap and that we feel like everything's covered. So definitely appreciate any feedback you may have for things you missed.
Anyone else? I think I see like lots of processing may be happening. I'm not sure, or or no processing. Combination of the.
I don't believe I've raised my hand properly, but I think I'm unmuted. Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay, here's my hand. I'm wondering where resilience falls in this plan. I see, you know, healthy, natural, and built environment. We've got environmental justice. We've got, you know, environmental contamination, right? Keep clean places, equitable access for housing, food, employment, et cetera. I'm just trying to connect the dots on some of the work that this committee is doing or commission is doing and wondering where where that topic falls in general. Expand on that a little. Is that part of another chapter?
Yes, it is. Thank you for the question. Phase three will include a chapter on resiliency as well on natural resources.
No one else is doing it, so go.
So would you say these chapters are adopted, that's because the Planning Commission is adopting them, but out of, not as a whole, you're having them adopt them chapter by chapter? Or just update them chapter by chapter?
We're adopting the Conference of Plan in three different phases. So they adopted the phase one in 2017. And that process goes from Planning Commission to City Council to the Board of County Commissioners. So there's a whole long series of adoptions that have happened.
Was ED in that phase? Or?
Yes.
So it's already antiquated-ish.
Yeah, there's there could be some updates to it.
What happens is we're talking about this as the second question. As you're talking about a chapter now that is almost 10 years from the first phase, what happens if you find that they're not talking to each other in the way they need to based on the current state of the world?
That's a really great question, and the my hope for this plan is that it becomes a living document. So we're continually working through it because this is going to be Eugene's specific conference plan. So this is what we want our community to be like and grow and develop. And as changes happen, and we realize we need to make changes and updates that we go back and we do that process.
Anything from from you, John, or Dennis? No.
I think overall, it looks, it looks very good and very comprehensive, and it's it's a little, it's a lot, so it's a little hard to, you know, feel like you can say that confidently with fairly short review, but but I think it's a good job, and it does sound like a, there's a big integration phase of all the pieces as you go along next, something that will challenge.
That's true, yes. This is the high-level policy setting, and what my colleagues talked about, one piece that could be considered part of the mutation base.
All right. With that.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Yeah, so. Thank you, Ted. I forgot to, I just forgot to introduce Stuart. Sorry, Stuart. You're here all the time. Anyways, thanks for that reminder, Devin. So tonight we have Reed Burner here. Reed is here to talk about public health standards. The goal tonight is to understand different perspectives and gather input on possible changes to Eugene's land use regulations to address some of the current concerns from residents leaving, living near industrial areas within the city limits. Um, there is more background provided in the packet, including FAQ about the project. So I'll turn it over to Reed to tell you more.
Thanks, Danielle, and thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Reed Burner. I'm the Land Use Supervisor with the Building and Permit Services Department. So my team handles review of building permits and site development permits for compliance with land use code standards. So that's why I get the pleasure of being the project manager for this project. So let's start with a little background here about some of this kind of process over what Stuart discussed. We know that where people live and work can significantly impact the quality of life and access to opportunities that they have. Two pillars of that Eugene's community vision includes to protect, repair, enhance the neighborhood livability, and also to provide ample economic opportunities for all community members. Land use patterns are closely tied to both neighborhood livability and economic opportunities within cities. To manage land use and development patterns, planners use zoning and the land use code as tools in hopes to mitigate these conflicts between uses. Zoning separates uses into general use types like residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, and also intensities of use from lower intensity to higher intensity uses. Zoning as a concept began back in the 1920s as a tool to help protect health and safety, typically restricting higher intensity uses away from lower intensity residential areas is the goal of that. However, in Eugene, we know that we have historic development patterns that have led to some areas of current conflict. Where in particular, residential areas are next to industrial areas. Industrial uses were first concentrated along the railroad, which arrived in Eugene in 1871, and the mill race, as well as Highway 99 and out in West Eugene. These were the primary routes connecting organ cities as early as 1846. As a result, properties known for industrial uses in Eugene are generally located along these major transportation and trade routes. From the 1950s to the 1970s, Eugene expanded in all directions with housing subdivisions replacing much of the outerlying historic agricultural areas in Bethel River Road and Santa Clara in particular. Those are just a few of the development patterns that have led us to a situation where we do have adjacent residential and industrial areas and the subsequent concerns about public health for people living near industrial areas. So a little background on this project, you might have heard, and I've even heard a reference tonight, this the Public Health Overlay Zone concept. And this is what was initially conversation spout up in the community. I believe there's a presentation that Sustainability Commission, because we found a letter from 2023 where the Sustainability Commission wrote to the mayor and city council in support of the Public Health Overlay Zone. However, that overlay zone was modeled after the Clear Lake Overlay Zone that was actually applied to land that was brought into the urban growth boundary back in 2017. So this was new land that had been in the county that was brought into the city, so it wasn't a situation of rezoning and taking away development rights. It was, that was the initial zoning when it was brought into the city. It was had that overlay zone applied to it. However, this project is focused on looking at industrial lands that are already located within the city limits. So in October of 2023, the City Council voted to direct staff to start looking into Land Use Code Amendment that would help look into these public health standards for industrial development citywide. The goal of that project was to rely on technical assistance from a study that our Public Works Sustainability Team had been working on and had sent out requests for proposals back in 2024. However, due to delay in response or lack of responses initially, the termination was made to move this project forward prior to going through that study. So we're kind of, we're going ahead before that study comes in, just to give a little background as to why we just kind of picked this back up in early 2025 when that decision was made to forge ahead without that technical assistance. we just kind of picked this back up in early twenty twenty-five, when that decision was made to forge ahead without that um technical assistance. So the project's scope specifically is to seek to understand the community perspectives from residents and business owners and to gather input on those possible changes to Eugene's land use code regulations that might address those concerns that residents have when they're living near industrial areas within the city limits. The project is focusing on three uh subject zones, the E two mixed use employment, the I two light medium industrial, and I three heavy industrial zones. Um this is kind of a zoomed in version of the map. I actually um have one printed out over on the wall here that we highlighted those industrial zones. You can see the E two zones are in more of the brighter uh fuchsia colors. I two is in kind of a pale pink and then I three is the heavy industrial zones. Um anything that um has those colors but is shaded out is actually land that is inside Eugene's urban growth boundary, but has not actually been annexed into the city limits yet. So that land is actually under Lain County's jurisdiction. And their land use code is a a version of land use code that Lain County adopts. Um so it's similar in some respects to Eugene's land use code, but not um the same because they don't always update it at the same pace that the city updates our land use code. So some of it's the same, some of it's different. I like to call it the Frankenstein code because the the city still has a responsibility of enforcing the regulations there, but it's um totally under Lain County's jurisdiction about what the code is in effect on on those properties. Okay, so the project, um we've identified four different uh specific action types. Um we're currently in the public engagement stage of the project. Um as I mentioned, we're seeking to understand community perspectives from residents, uh businesses, and community organizations and to gather input on possible changes. Uh we're also studying the existing regulatory scheme at the local, state, and federal levels, and to identify any potential gaps in those regulations. We'll then incorporate that community feedback with the understanding of those existing regulations to determine if there are any land use code regulations that could appropriately address those community concerns. As this project only includes land use code, um we'll also be gathering ideas about other tools that could be incorporated into future projects. So we do have a pretty narrow scope, but we're have, we're hoping to have as much conversation as possible and get as much feedback from the community. So if there's other ideas that come forth, um we'll pass it along to our long-range planners or to other uh divisions or work groups that handle um changes to other uh parts of the code. So um move on to just a little bit of a summary of the existing regulators and regulations. Um industrial developments are regulated by a number of regulators, including the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, uh Lain Regional Air Protection Agency, or La Rappa. Uh there's also C of Eugene wastewater and stormwater standards. There is the City of Eugene nuisance code, the Eugene Springfield Fire Marshals Office, and there are some existing regulations in Eugene land use code that I'll cover um a little more depth in the um upcoming slides here. So uh Oregon's Department of Environmental Quality, or DQ, um they are primarily responsible for protecting and enhancing Oregon's water, air, and land quality. Uh they manage proper disposal of solid and hazardous wastes. They provide assistance in cleaning up contaminated properties and enforce Oregon's environmental laws. They also have the authority to issue civil penalty penalties for violations of pollution laws and other environmental standards. Uh La Rappa is um responsible for issuing air permits to commercial and industrial operations within Lain County. So uh La Rappa takes over that air responsibility from um the DQ and handles that uh just in Lain County. Um they issue air permits um for um that have operational requirements that follow federal, state, and local regulations and are ultimately designed to minimize emissions. Uh they also take into account of proximity to residences as well. Um their programs include compliance tools such as emission limits, uh required monitoring, source testing, records keeping, and reporting obligations. They also enforce a newer set of additional requirements that uh are under the Cleaner Air Organ Act that was adopted in twenty nineteen. As I mentioned, Eugene Code does have some standards that um address some of these um industrial operations that include um wastewater, making sure that any sort of hazardous waste is treated before um any water ends up in our wastewater system, stormwater, including oil control and source controls, to make sure that there's not any sort of operations that allow uh pollutants to enter into our stormwater system and then end up in our streams and rivers and lakes. And then we also have a nuisance code um that covers a number of different um activities from industrial or commercial operations, including debris, odors, noise, and there was a recent change to include vibrations in that too. So even if a noise does not reach a certain level of decibels, it can still be brought into the regulations. Um and then there's also failure to main stormwater facilities and and other nuisance standards. Um and that that's enforced on a complaint basis. So we have a co-compliance department that takes complaints about any of these nuisances and then investigates and um level, level civil penalties if um they find a violation of the code. Uh Eugene Springfield Fire Department, they have a number of deputy fire marshals that work uh with our plan review teams to ensure that uh all the codes uh and standards are complied with. They um are actively, so so when we get building permits in, uh the fire marshal takes a look and um yeah, works with um building permit reviewers. They work with land use and public works, and they also go out into the field and do inspections. Um they inspect um anything, any commercial or industrial projects that have hazardous tanks or processes. They also um issue uh operational permits whenever business stores handles or uses hazardous materials. And they also administer the toxic's right to know program locally. And so that's tracking whatever um chemicals businesses use. They track those so that uh fire staff knows when they're going into a building, if there is some sort of a fire, that they know what sort of um hazardous materials might be on site so they can be safe. So that brings us to Eugene's land use code. So the vines code is located in chapter nine of Eugene Code. Um it's a very substantial binder. If we, back when we did have it printed out, now it's all online, but it's a pretty exhaustive, and the land use um does establish allowed uses in different zones. Um the goal of Lain's goal ultimately is implement standards to ensure development is compatible with surrounding areas and aligns with those city goals and policies, those ones that Stuart Stuart discussed earlier and and other policies as well. Um some uses require additional review and approval processes like uh site reviews or conditional use permit reviews. Um the land use code uh use table identifies those uses and which ones do require those additional processes. And then if you do have to go through a site review or conditional use permit, it would give the opportunity for public um comment, testimony, or uh in the case of conditional use permits, actually goes to a hearings official to make the decision. And also, uh for to note that the land use code must comply with the statewide um Oregon land use planning goals. So those cover um a number of different factors. So anytime we're making changes to land use code, we have to show that whatever changes we're proposing complies with the statewide planning goals in addition to any of the comprehensive policies we have in our yeah, our comprehensive plan. So we've identified uh three basic categories of land use code concepts that um we want to get feedback on as far as this project. Um first, there are industrial development standards, which includes things like setbacks, buffers, and landscaping requirements. Um that also would be like building height, um lot coverage, things like that. So depending on the use and what the zone is, there's different requirements uh based on those industrial development standards. Um second is to consider changes to the land use code that would allow for improved coordination with those existing regulators and regulations that we discussed previously. So for instance, if um somebody wants to open up an industrial development, they have to go to El La Rappa to get an air permit. Um but there's nothing in the land use code that specifically says that we check to make sure that they've got that La Rappa permit before moving forward with their development. So that's just an example of um looking into one way that we could coordinate with the other regulators. And then another uh option is to look into um expanding those existing local review and um approval processes. And so we're seeking feedback on whether there's any other use types that would be fitting for having a side review or condition use permit requirement, for example. So as I said, we're in the middle of a public engagement. We have um upcoming feedback opportunities, um couple of public workshops, one scheduled for tomorrow, one scheduled for next week. We also have an online survey that just went live today. Um it's up on our Engage Eugene website. It'll be available for the next month. Um and then we have a couple of other events that um we're going to be going to in the community over the next um four weeks at this point. So ultimately, the goal is to, as we um go forward with this and get feedback, ultimately, we will um potentially have a land use code amendment that we're looking in for adoption. And once we do have a proposed land use code amendment, the formal adoption process includes going to the Eugene Planning Commission for work sessions and public hearings and Eugene, Eugene City Council for work sessions, public hearings. So um there will be additional opportunities for uh public feedback and comment as we go through the formal adoption process if we get to that point. So I know that this has been a lot of information, and it was coming at too fast. Um but um we have a lot more information on our Engage Eugene page, on the project website uh page. We have all those upcoming workshops, uh FAQs available online and that online survey. Um please, if you're interested in taking it or want to pass it out to anybody you know in the community, we're really hoping to get as uh many people to provide their feedback and so that we can understand what um the community thinks about this project. So after we do complete this engagement, we'll put together a a summary of engagement where we uh and feedback we receive. And we're going to be presenting that at a six uh June eighteenth, excuse me, um city council work session. Um and these are just some of the key questions we're hoping um either discuss, or maybe you can think about and provide us feedback um at a later time. Um and those questions include, what questions or concerns do you have related to the issue of housing being located near industrial areas? Are there any specific industrial uses that you were concerned about having near housing? And how can we bring the community together to become healthier, to build the economy and to increase livability in our city? And I know those aren't easy questions, but that's what we're uh struggling with as we're going through with this project. So any feedback or insight that you all have, we'd be happy to um hear from you. And um yeah, with that, happy to answer any questions of yours.
Laura. I have two. The first one is, you know, J H Baxter, that was why this all got rolling. Would J H Baxter have been able to be in cited now? Like, is the existing regulation such that that wouldn't have happened?
Yeah, and and that's a great question. And that is what a lot of the energy came behind. And the more I looked into it, we've had meetings with La Rappa and DQ. And also, um there is staff in the Eugene Public Works Department that handles uh that wastewater um system. So we've talked with them. And they've said very clearly that what Jace Baxter did, even if they had, if they hadn't been bad actors, if they had actually followed what they were supposed to be doing in the first place, they would not have gotten permit approvals to have the use that they did. Um so they started back in the forties, back when none of these regulations were in existence, and just sounded like it was like the Wild West back then with their amount of of pollutant um and just like having um some of the chemicals and pouring off logs and filtering into the groundwater supply. But all of that is regulated now under the wastewater and stormwater standards, and that any of the um the polluting impact that came from their operations, that would have been regulated by La Rappa and sound like with their proximity to residential uses, they would have never been able to obtain air permits for their operations. And then also, we know that they were bad actors too and violated uh state and federal and local laws as well.
Uh my next question, I I kind of asked earlier to the wrong person. Um I don't understand why the business community would be concerned about this because it seems like you're just going to be properly citing the right businesses in the right location, the right industries in the right location, following existing laws. So where, from your perspective, like where is the route between?
So yeah, there's so have a land use code, just kind of step back a little bit. It it kicks in with new development or if there's expansions and um there's different code sections that talk about like a twenty percent expansion or fifty percent expansion. That's when those new standards kick in. So I believe the concern would be if all of a sudden there's um an existing operation in a location that is close to a a residential, and they want to expand their operation um or even in the situation I've heard um some examples where they actually wanted to expand in order to put in more equipment that would better filter contaminants. That is, was enough to like trigger the new standards. So I think the concern is that existing operations would get caught up in these new requirements, and it would create a situation where they're feeling hamstrung and and um there's an issue with economic development because um and and then also, um if someone had bought a piece of property and all the standards go into effect and they were planning on future development, that uncertainty might raise the cost and where they might just decide to not develop that property and go somewhere else. Um one other thing that has come up, um I know um I pointed out earlier that the areas that are inside the U G B that haven't been annexed to, um if we do add um more on our standards, that might also uh act as a deterrent for those people actually wanting to annex into the city limits if they feel like, okay, but they're going to be under more strict regulation if I do annex. So those are just some of the feedback I've heard um from.
Can you, just to follow through with this, like, can there be like exemptions if a business is going to expand to increase their, you know, make their operation cleaner? Like, can there be exemptions from that? Is that a way to handle this?
I mean, ultimately, yeah, we could write an exemption. And when it starts getting into exemptions like that, it becomes more difficult to draft that language in a way that can be applied uh uniformly across the board. But yeah, it's something that we can look into having exemptions for, or yeah, and again, that triggers as far as like what type of expansion? When do the new standards kick in, et cetera? That's something that can be um determined based on um feedback and and what direction we want to go with the code changes.
Counselor Christian C. Um, just to clarify, if these properties that are county want to actually develop, they would have to annex and and then would be subject to our code, right?
In some circumstances, there's also um the I C C O, which is the Industrial Corridor Community Organization, is basically that corridor that's between highway ninety-nine and the Northwest Expressway. They have an agreement um from back in the day that they're actually allowed to um develop with an agreement to annex should they become available to annex. So yeah, because of the patchwork. So until they're contiguous, because two of the standards that you have to, in order to annex, you have to be contiguous or bordering other annexed property. And you also have to have availability of city services. So whether it's that contiguity is not uh available or those services haven't been run out to that neighborhood yet, those are two of the um potential hurdles to annexation.
Okay, and then my second question is surrounding the allowed uses, and I'll say that I'm not super familiar with the employment industrial zones. Um but one of the things that I've noticed is that the allowed use table in there, the uses are fairly broad, and I feel like that's you know, a, a, first of all, you don't have the list of like very, very specific uses, like I've seen some really weird uses of these useless. But like you have categories like warehouses, which could be sort of a smaller storage facility that, you know, is storing stuffed animals or something adorable that everybody loves. Or it could be a giant gas facility that's like storing tons of gasoline. Um, you know, you look at like wood products, uh you know, thinking about like a carpenter, that's a wood product manufacturer. They're taking woods and they're turning it into something that that has like a comparatively low environmental impact um versus, I believe Jakes Baxter was in, like, some of the wood products manufacturers are pretty scary. You know, leather is another example. If you're producing leather, leather goods from like existing leather, that I assume would fall under that. And so like, I feel like within those use categories, there are types of industry that people would have very different feelings about and very different impacts. And is there a way that that's being clarified and distinguished in the code, right? Like if we say we don't want wood products manufacturers in the I one, are we also eliminating carpenters, right? Like, small scale, small shop carpenters.
Yeah, and that's an excellent point, Counselor Shinsky. And yeah, the land use code table is their antiquated uses. They're very broad categories. It's kind of a blunt instrument. It doesn't really bore down on what those impacts are. Like, for instance, there's like chemical manufacturing is pretty broad. I mean, that could be from some like a makeup company to all the way to like the worst chemicals you can imagine. It's very broad categories. And then um like warehousing, like you said, um we've had conversations with um some um business and community that have um a warehousing operation and everything's controlled systems. And there's no um environmental um pollution or anything like that. But yeah, then there's also like larger warehousing operations that have trucks driving around all the time that would have more impact. So that's another one of the challenges in using the land use code that we've found. Um having conversations with uh La Rappa when they have um five levels of air pollution permits and they have um a pre-scoping conference, anytime a business want to open up where they can actually bore down on what that specific use is and find more about what those impacts are based on that specific use. So if um we were going to use the land use code table to make some of these outcomes, it would definitely be a good idea to make sure that we are considering all of the potential um effects and what types of businesses would be rolled up in those changes um before making any sort of um big rules about like some use wouldn't be allowed or we'd have to go through the C P or something like that. We'd want to make sure that we understood what those impacts are before going forward.
Thanks.
Courtney. I I I want to thank you for sitting at the end of the table and talking about this tonight because I can see you being super thoughtful about like the breadth of this body, this task that the council's given you, and it's complex and it's emotional, and there's a lot of future repercussions, good and bad, um for just the discussions alone. And so I I appreciate the hard work. I wonder, uh, I still wonder at the underlying problem statements that this tool is hoping to solve for, because it's still not clear to me that those problem statements are factual as opposed to emotional in some cases. There is truth always in the emotion, but the form of the tool to respond to it is based on exactly what is happening in that emotion. And I wonder about the the conflation of nuisance code versus land use code. Because a lot of the things we're talking about are a question of like, how does the nuisance? Because a lot of the things we're talking about are a question of like, how does the nuisance code respond to this? Or the resourcing of staff enforcing the nuisance code. Especially in the case of how someone choose to be an actor, chooses to be an actor versus, you know, like the Baxter thing that just got brought up. So can you speak to, you know. What your understanding is slowly of the gap that you mentioned, like what is exactly the concern? Are you starting to get a picture of it? And is that a nuisance code issue or is it? Do you still feel like it's a land use issue?
Oh, I mean. Just step back. So the concerns we hear is that when we do have industrial properties that are located near residential zones. So I mean, that's something that. Has happened through historic zoning in the city. So that's what we're trying to look at and figure out is, okay. What are those impacts that the community is feeling? And is that? We said, is that related to that actor? Is that something that is somebody is creating a nuisance that could be wrapped into some other regulation? Or is it a situation where there is an opportunity for the land use code to take a closer look and say, okay, for these particular use types? Having a conditional permit process would give a check at the beginning to make sure that they have gone through all the processes appropriately. Made sure that they've mitigated any potential impacts, that they've met those additional standards and it would give an opportunity for a neighborhood. Hood, if they're concerned with it, to present testimony and to have an actual hearing. Now, we have not heard any specific uses at this point. That's why we're asking for that feedback. So I'm not trying to say that we're going forward with that. I'm just using that as example that that is something that the land use code could help businesses get started on the right foot. And help them understand that I know larger industries typically, they have environmental compliance officers on staff. They understand all of those permits that they need to go through. I've sat in meetings with business people where they've listed off all the different regulators they have and it's expansive. However, there are also businesses that get started here that don't have those types of resources or understanding of all the permitting. And if we can help get them off on the right foot and make sure that they understand all the potential impacts and that they are mitigating those. And we could help if you get ahead of a situation that might snowball with that lack of understanding. So that's just one way the land use code can be more proactive. Rather than just being reactive in the case of the bad actors.
Mine kind of relates to like the last thing that you were saying and partially to in response to your thinking about things that Counselor Krasinski said and. I think. It's important to note that. Assuming that something is going to have an impact. Like say the difference between. A wood processing and a carpenter. I mean, that's pretty extreme and and but also assuming that. It'll be bad to have wood processing in a neighborhood necessarily, like that there will be an impact. I think is. I mean, the whole purpose of this is to try to mitigate impact and make sure everyone's following. So, so to your point, it would be the, I mean, the true. The proof in the pudding would be the enforcement. That's where I'm, you know, like, yeah, it's going to be more expensive, but people need to be safe. That's just part of doing clean business, I feel like. And assuming that someone is not going to do clean business and it's going to. Have an, have an impact is going to limit economic development and and reduce the amount of jobs in a, in a. Town that is desperate for tax dollars. I think no one can deny how much money we want for things. All, all of us. Right. I mean, because for services, for whatever it is. So I just. I just, my concern would be, yes, I want it to be clean, but I don't want it to be only carpenters. I mean, that's not gonna, that's gonna employ not enough people. Those kind of, that sort of dream of, of a small. Like a, a, a community run by small businesses. Needs, needs some other stuff too.
I definitely hear you. And that's why we're trying to get feedback on what those concerns are and then to understand existing regulators to see if like, okay. Is this already being dealt with by existing regulations or are there gaps or anything that we could do? And we don't know at this point. I mean, there's research, but it's kind of a new thing to take a look at this is when it comes to land use code. There's been. Couple other jurisdictions that have looked on some similar project, but in trying to get feedback from, they don't really have any. Specific results or any support for helping guide our policy. So yeah, that's why we're just trying to get feedback from the community at this point.
Yeah. And I think like also to your point, like are you as a gas storage facility and would that not be treated completely different? To a stuffed animal, you know, like where's, where's the regulation involved? Like, yeah, okay, that's gas. It needs to be stored somewhere. For something, it's going to happen. So how do you make sure that the stuffed animal storage facility? You know, has its appropriate regulations and the gas storage facility also can do that, but it has the appropriate regulations. Not just doesn't exist, I think.
Excellent point. Yeah. Sure. Those thoughts and concerns too.
That you made just a few moments ago, you know, I wrote down the word assurance and is accurate to say the intent. Of, you know, putting these standards or these goals into land use is assuring. That all regularities, regulatory standards have been met. You used an example, which I found intriguing of, you know, corporate entity that's going to build a plan. They've got staff. That know how to interface with El Rappa. But a, you know, carpenter who's a cabinet maker who wants to expand substantially. And have a spray room and things that create a whole different level of toxic emissions. When you start spraying a lot of cabinetry with lacquer. You know, may or may not know what the regulations are and requiring that. There's some assurance that all those standards are met. Is that a significant part of the goals? And I'm particularly concerned about the equity issue. Because what is located to whose neighborhood? And that's the reality that exists in terms of train song right now. It's the largest population of people in color in Lake County. You know, that's the reality of whose neighborhood. So, you know, we're trying to not repeat that. And assuring that there's another level of review. Including for expansions within an existing area. Is that an accurate view of what I'm seeing there as the goal?
That's accurate as far as like the coordination piece that I touched on with the land use concept. So, so for instance. If someone comes in for a development permit to our team, we review for the land use code requirements, the setbacks, the height. Landscaping and parking, things like that. There's nothing that says that. We would make sure that they have talked to La Rappa or D Q and got any sort of permits that they need to get first. The coordination piece would. I mean, hypothetically would say something along the lines of before you could get your permit, you have to have those pre-scoping conferences with La Rappa so you understand. What regulations.
Right. Stormwater standards would have to be met.
Yeah, we review stormwater. Yeah, we have a.
Part of the whole project, stormwater. So.
Yeah, Public Works is empowered by the D E Q to enforce those D Q standards locally at permit review stage. But when it comes to La Rappa, there's nothing in there. So. When La Rappa, when somebody goes to La Rappa to get an air permit, they get what's called a land use compatibility statement. So that's a check at the local level that the use is permitted, whatever use they're proposing or whatever expansion, that's a permitted use. So. They send those to us. If it's a permitted use in the use table, we sign off on that form. There's, there's no other analysis. And in certain circumstances, we have. Given a development or issued a development permit and then we get the La Rappa Lux after the fact. So there has been certain circumstances that we know of that people have. Done permits before starting that error permitting process. So this would just be a situation where staff would ensure that they've had these conversations. And have started those processes of getting any additional required permits prior to issuing a building permit. And so that's the idea behind the coordination concept piece.
Thank you. Maybe one more question, I think. Sure, no one else? When we're talking about the, the wrapper and the environmental regulations, like. There, there are types of industry types of business that are going to have environmental impacts, like no matter what, like mitigate, but you can't eliminate. Are those standards. Designed for spaces that are more, you know, I mean, look at this map like. You know, there's, there's a lot of those lots where there's. No houses nearby. And then there's like different uses in between holding sort of a buffer. Are the, are the environmental standards different depending on like what is surrounding? The property, right? Like if you're, if you're going to be a, a high impact. Use, high impact industry. Does La Rappa put like higher restrictions on you if you have a daycare center next door?
I know that they look into residences specifically. I'm not under reserve about daycares, but I know that that's part of the cleaner organ. Additional standards and having conversations with La Rappa leadership as we've tried to understand how we can be better partners. Regulatory partners. That's one of the things that they've pointed out that those new standards, not only for new uses, expansions, but they're also kind of going back around to anyone that's in existence. And making sure that if there are now residents uses that are nearby, that they are tracking those impacts. And just as an anecdote, the Hynek's facility out there that used to be that we're going to manufacture semiconductors. Well, semiconductors, I guess, are the highest level of error permit that La Rappa gives. So it's. Highest environmental assessment, highest mitigation requirements, neighborhood meetings, public hearings, things like that. They sounded like that there would be potential issues and even having that type of operation there with all of those new residences that have gone in. On Willow Creek Road out there. So that's kind of a situation where, where as we expand more residences, then all of a sudden that does put an additional impact on. Industrial areas.
Okay. So, so La Rappa is looking at, it's not just like a flat. X parts per million. It's like, maybe if you're here, you can do X parts per million. And maybe if you're there, you can do Y because of.
Yeah. And they even look into like prevailing wind patterns too. I know that that's part of their analysis. And we're not the experts on it, but.
Have we cleaned up some of this residential next to industrial stuff? Like have we done some rezonings or anything like that to?
No, rezonings are challenging. And that was like the idea of the public health overlay was to rezone the industrial properties. But with our billable lands inventory, I believe it's very challenging. It's more of a long range planner things, but. Those land patterns and. Making sure that we have the appropriate amount of lands that are buildable based on each one of the different use types is mandated in the state level. So. I think in certain circumstances, we're pretty hamstrung into make massive changes. But yeah, that would be a potential project down the line and looking into potentially rezoning.
Briefly, so Hynek's, I happen to be involved in that through La Rappa. They were adjacent to residential. And but it was not utilized yet. And so it was allowed to be built and wouldn't be now. Is the new plan going to preclude that kind of thing happening?
Well, my understanding is when Cleaner Air Organ Act went into place in twenty nineteen, it added additional requirements and those are. What would pose the problems going down the line. In addition to, it's a lot more residential uses that haven't built out there too.
All right. Thank you. Very much. We're a little bit behind schedule, but I think if we could just keep the, our discussion shorter, we could. Stay on target, right? So the next part is like discussing if we want among ourselves. I mean, they're going to stay in the room in case there's like clarifications or any information that we need to help. Inform our discussion. If anyone is interested in having the discussion. Always hard to get it going, I feel like.
I, I think that there's a lot of learning in this topic, which is great. And we talked a lot about El Rappa's role and D Qs and M P A plays a role. And I think what I heard a lot is that the city itself is actually doing learning about those regulatory agencies and the interface of city code. With kind of existing structures. I think that's a great place that the Sustainability Commission can also, you know. Having El Rappa talk about how they process these things isn't a bad thing either. Something that catches me is just a strong concern that we're jumping ahead of the problem statement. We're, we're finding the tool before we've confirmed what the problem is and we solve for the wrong thing. So we, we do a land use tool. Ahead of realizing that what we have is a regulatory or nuisance system breakdown. And then we don't actually solve the real problem. We see more examples of what people articulated today is the fear point being J H Baxter or. Pre-existing non-conforming uses. I would like to say, because I heard this articulated in the room about timber industry being scary. We shouldn't feel that any of our manufacturers are scary. I think that as a appointed body, it's on us. To get into those places where we have uncertainty or where we don't understand. The environment that our neighbors, neighboring businesses residents are operating in and explore. Because I would say they're not scary. They're just different than what you know. And the definition of beauty is different. An industrial site is incredible and exciting to me and it's beautiful because of what it creates for the community. But it might look ugly to someone else. So I just think that's a really important place for an appointed committee to make sure. We feel empowered to go experience those places and, you know, before we start. Articulating what is attractive or isn't, or what needs to be fixed. That's a diatribe and I appreciate you all letting me make it. But I get excited about manufacturing and things.
I think the key issues here is, you know, proximity, you know, about. What needs of health and safety need to be a community priority and not. Look away if it's economically beneficial. I mean, the, the difficulty we've created in the past is, you know. I don't remember the number, but there's something like forty five. Industries in Lake County that El Rappa regularly monitors and forty one of them are in the same zip code. That's a problem that occurred in the past that we want to make sure isn't replicated again. And that there are residents who live in that zip code. You know, and whose life expectancy is less than mine because I live in South Hills, you know, so. That's why I think it's a landiest issues to figure out. Not to continue with a concentration in some neighborhoods. You know, and I intentionally looked at those differences of what kind of cabinet making. Lacquer spray is way different than just cutting the wood and building the cabinets and just assuring that. We know what's going to go on in there and what's allowable in proximity. And to residential areas in particular, you know, and. I've looked at the conditional use piece from the other side. We build a, you know, three million dollar childcare center at the university in a residential neighborhood. It's allowable in our one, but we certainly went through the process. So making sure that that process is, you know. Careful. Particularly in health and safety issues, I think should be a priority.
I just want to say, no offense was intended by the use of the word scary. It was trying to recognize. That different processes, different industry. Has different impacts on people and people have different. There, you know. Some chemicals are, are more impactful or more dangerous than others. And so it wasn't intended to, to be something that was saying like, it's a. Bad thing. It was just. So if I used word choice, that was not great. I wanted to call that out and acknowledge that.
Sorry, I don't know. Yes, I am really appreciating that Eugene's trying to not just do this as usual because we see what happens to our community and the health impacts. And it does unfortunately affects. People with access economic resources and all the things, the inequalities. And. When you try to do something that's changing business as usual, it's interesting to see where the pushback comes from because there's definitely a lot of.
When you try to do something that's changing business as usual, it's interesting to see where the pushback comes from, because there's definitely a lot of. So I appreciate that we're talking about this and the city's working on it and that we can give our input and feedback however we can, but I'm. Definitely supportive of trying to change things for the future because it's, we can, you know, we can just do better for everybody.
Oh, Alexi, thank you, never looking in the right place.
Thanks, um, I wanna note, uh I guess I'll. I'll start by appreciating uh the presentation and the work that's happened done here, um. The reason that I am on the Sustainability Commission is to myself and to help. Take a longer view, so to get past. The quarter, the year, and into the decades timeframe in terms of what are the impacts of the choices we're making now, so that. There's long-term implications in terms of economic development, right, we're looking at highly concentrated uh corridors with. Uh heavy industry or, or medium industry, which is often more polluting. Um and job generating, and so that, those, those choices to make those concentrated development corridors. Have made for repercussions down the line, more jobs, more pollution, it's not always like that, um but that's, that's not uncommon. In, in Eugene and elsewhere, um but I think it's. Particularly uh valuable that we have the chance to. Take this comprehensive planning approach and think about the longer term impacts and implications of. The development choices we're making, so having a comprehensive plan that considers what's going to happen. From land use development choices from various different uh. Uh focus areas, different framings, different, different topics. And allows us to take the longer view, not just the same sustainability commission, but the city in general. Is particularly valuable, so I just wanna note that I, I think from a sustainability point of view as. As the Sustainability Commissioner, or at least me personally on it, um. It's useful to think about, it's useful to use this comprehensive planning framework to enable. Longer term thinking that gets past the quarterly pro, uh quarterly profit projection or the. My project must have, you know, a seven year or less payback, which is not uncommon in the business world. And into what does this mean for the community in ten, twenty, thirty years, um some of the. Proximity related issues with citing polluting activities near residential areas. Have implications in the decade timeframe, uh and so I think it's, it's valuable to. Have a planning process and have metrics that evaluate what happens ten years, twenty years, thirty years, fifty years out. Because I sure hope and expect we're still gonna be living in Eugene, or someone's still gonna be living Eugene in fifty or a hundred years. Um and if there are. Uh very long-term pollutants that are still having health impacts, those may stick around long after the jobs are gone. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that the process exists to consider uh. Impacts on timeframes potentially longer than um is often considered in our planning processes in this country.
Thanks. All right, well, I think I'm gonna wind up the discussion part, so we can do, actually give some time to. What we've been not giving a lot of time to lately, which is like um council and staff and commissioner updates, I feel like we've cut those short a little bit lately, so. I would like to move on to that, if that's okay with everybody, we feel we discussed. Okay. Counselor Kusinski. Oh, wait, what am I skipping, did I commit? Oh, I did, I'm sorry, cause it's on the other page and I'm looking, sorry, um. Oh, yes, so. The, the committee update, Alexi, do you wanna? Do you wanna leave this?
Sure, uh well, we, we heard some comments about this at the very beginning, um we have put together a memo, uh. Went through the committee process to draft that uh and. Got support from city staff to put together a couple of graphics and actually lay that out. Um and so we've got uh draft prep for that, um I think the, we'd be open to taking a look based on public comments today to see if there's any factual. Uh corrections that need to be made, um but uh. Oh, that's just a wave goodbye, okay, great, um thanks folks, uh but uh, but um. Danielle, maybe you can inform us, do we, what does that mean, if we, if we were to take that back to committee and review for factual corrections? Um what does that mean in terms of timing for approval, cause we brought it to this committee to send it out, right? Commission was sending it up, excuse me.
The, the, the handout was approved in the committee, and so if it wants to go back to maybe that's the committee, that's fine, I just need it for the packet. Like a week ahead of the next meeting, so if you wanna take it back into committee, that's fine, and then it could come again at the next meeting.
What, maybe, maybe we could have a moment to discuss then, just briefly, but can we, can we have five minutes on that, do we have that in the agenda?
We can try. Was it really five minutes?
It seems like the. I, I think the, the, the concerns were really around the phrase many gas appliances don't run without electricity. And to question be like, is many a majority, is many all, is many? Too many, um is this a value statement or just a, a? Sort of an indistinct nu, number of some large number of gas appliances, I think the purpose of that statement in the memo. Or the document was to say. You may have a gas appliance that doesn't apply or doesn't run when there's no electricity, a furnace, and one of the um comments in Northwest Natural Letter said. My gas furnace didn't run when the electricity was out, so I went and bought a battery, fair enough, a battery is, you know. Uh an electric backup system, it's one of the system types we, we cover here in this, in this memo, um. Uh my take upon, based on my opinion and my research is there are many gas appliances that do not operate when. The electricity system is not operational, um but I really like big picture, that's how I factually, I, I ran through the stuff while we were in this meeting. And didn't see things that I personally think are, are factual misses. Because I don't think many says most or a specific number, um. But I think big picture, like this is not about fossil fuel systems, this is specifically about non-fossil fuel based systems, and the public comments were generally about. Fossil fuel based systems being backup systems. And to, to like, sure, fair enough, but that's not what we're talking about, um so I just wanna see if others have, have major issues.
Yeah, Laura. I have a quick um friendly amendment, I, I don't personally think it's of value for us to debate many. Proposing, what if we just change it to say some? And that's it, the only change you make to this memo, because like everyone already said, this is not about fossil fuel systems, we have the little intro. But if we change that word from many to some, then we don't have to wonder if we're accurate or not accurate, and we can vote on it. Move forward, that's my.
Jan or Mitra?
That same word change occurred to me, so I would be supportive of that, I wonder, then this is getting stickier, but is it? Does it seem like it's not clear enough from the title and the intro here that this is supposed to be focused on? Non, uh non fossil fuel things, that that's part of the confusion, and is that, that need to be clarified a little bit more?
That's what I was gonna say too, is it sounded like we might need to just. Make that more clear beginning, and then I just wanted to bring up one of the other things mentioned, and one of the comments was a, a link. More information on the um EPA approved wood stoves, so I just didn't wanna overlook that as a potential change that was requested. Was it the EPA approved wood stoves or EPA certified?
Certified.
Was it the certified?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There could be a link, but.
And I, you know, this is partly a process, you know, if we end up with too many amendments, it's gonna go back to committee anyway. But I'm wondering if we just end up with some simple ones, like if it's from many to some, I'm wondering if it read. Um climate-friendly reliable backup energy systems for homes and business with the same preface statement. Um so that it just brings more emphasis to the statement you may demonstrate at the beginning, the intent was to look at. Non-fossil fuel systems and just to lift up that intent in the title.
I think that that enters into another conversation, when you say that it's climate friendly.
If we did that too much, that's what I, I think we may need to refer back to committee.
Or we could just, yeah, could we just say? I guess my motion was to send it back to committee at this point, cause we are moving into different pieces, we haven't been, had the time to evaluate fully. Potentially the letters, I missed it, that's my bad, I didn't see it in my inbox, um I would just, for the time, I'd send it back to committee. I also think that businesses took the time to read it and provide feedback and offered to present, and we allowed EWEB to come in and present. I, I think it could be a valuable relationship element to include them in it and take them up on that offer, um. And so that would be my recommendation, is we take it back to committee for a month. Laura, a different recommend, proposal, as of timings, we're gonna run out of time, we keep going back for a month.
Is the times.
Is that we just teams that were just found, and then we say non-natural gas. So we just make it clear that we're talking about other backup systems that are not natural gas, cause that is the problem, that's my, but I'm also. If that doesn't work for everyone, then we'll go back to.
Non-fossil fuel.
I think you need to, yeah.
Are you saying in the title or somewhere in the document to say non-fossil fuel?
The title, so it's really clear that we're not talking about fossil fuel backup. But we are the diesel.
That's renewable.
He's got his hand up.
Alexi.
Um, the, there's more work that this committee is trying to do, and so. I don't think it's the end of the world if we take another month to finish this piece, but I also wanna reserve the time that the committee has. To focus on um the other outputs, uh and so I, I actually think. We, we settled on the name for the committee. In the work plan, cleaner allowable backup energy systems, I think the name. Of the document and the name of the committee makes sense to be aligned, I actually would prefer to leave the name as it is, my concern is that. I, I don't wanna consider that, that the phrase clean. Yeah, it rings a clean coal, which I think is, is nonsense um mostly, uh and so I, I don't wanna to. Drop the word clean coal in favor of something like non-fossil fuel or climate uh friendly. Because I think that is risking uh over politicizing something that's really about keeping your home or business online during an emergency. And so I, I, I actually would say what I would like to do personally, as, and as chair of the committee, is. To adjust many to some and see if we can move this thing along and be done with it, if we need to edit it in the future, sure, I'm open to that. Um but the, the issues raised. Um from what I've seen are not, there's not, there's not factual adjustments that, that would be named, bame. That would be need to be, that would need to be made, um and if there were, I think some, many to some would address that, so I would move that we. Change uh many to some, leave the title the same, the same, and, and see if we can uh move this thing along. I'm open to having the link, yeah, be happy to add the link.
I have a question on the link, cause the link that was included from Harvey was a link to um. We have to find our own link, it was linked with their website, is that the link you want me to include?
Uh that link should go directly to the EPA certification page, I can check that and put it in the chat.
Search that, I think I provided that. There was, I, I, I had researched that and put a link in there to the EPA certification, but. I don't know that, my God, edit it.
Okay, so the changes would be change many to some and include the EPA link, is that?
Right.
Okay. Um, just to answer a couple other questions that were asked, there's two more months before this commission wraps up for this fiscal year. So that answers the timing question, um. If there's a motion to pass, that can happen, but um then, so that would answer this next question, but if. This does not pass, I need to know if you guys wanna invite the businesses or not. That happens first, I guess.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to make those two adjustments, uh as Danielle just noted, and then uh see if we can't pass that out uh at this time. To vote on it, that is.
A second.
Oh, a question or a friendly related to the motion?
Sure.
With the friendly amendments. Go ahead.
I was just wondering about one, one more, uh and I'm okay if this doesn't work for people, but to address the other. Um issue we talked about, if, if you don't want to change the title to change the. Second to last sentence in the intro, given these challenges, interest is growing in resilient backup energy solutions. Maybe just do a paren, non-fossil fuel there, and then that ensure power regardless of. Possibility.
So there's three changes, many to some.
That's a friendly, so that the motioner and the seconder have to agree to it.
I agree.
Agreed.
All in favor?
You, I think you have to do stand aside and oppose, so we get that noted, cause some people might.
Sorry.
Support me, all, everyone else approved.
Who's present?
Sorry, thank you.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
So other updates from this committee um is we have some more work to do on the informational memo to council. Um once that's nice and clean, we'll bring it here hopefully next month.
Now I wanna make a motion to extend the meeting for, cause it's adjourning at seven twenty, we have one minute, so ten minutes. On favor.
It's all I have, and then I have a kid that will be standing on curb.
Understood, understood, if you need to go do that, um.
I can make quick updates from education outreach. One minute.
I'd like to hear from Counselor Kusinski, I mean, I'm not, don't wanna skip over you. Yeah, can.
I'm sorry, I don't have a, a ton, we have mostly been talking about money. By that's, that's and, and goods, so money and goods have been the two main topics of this conversation. Um I did wanna uh mention that we did today, cause there was a lot of conversation about this at the last meeting. Uh we did approve uh MFT today, um so that's gonna be. I forget the exact number of units, over a hundred units um over uh on Fifth Street, um downtown. And with that, that brings us to seventy percent of that MFT cap that you were talking about. That we talked about last time, cause I know there was some interest of like, when do we hit that cap and redefine the criteria, and so.
It's a MFT application for development, it wasn't approving MFT.
Yeah, it wasn't a great MFT as a concept, that's already there, a specific MFT application. A MFT.
A MFT, I heard the A.
Yeah, it's a multi-unit property tax exemption.
Great, does anyone have any questions about that? Or? Counselor Kusinski. All right, um. Just a reminder, I know this sometimes happens, sometimes doesn't, um but read over um. Just the, like, the, looking at the work plan, what, what's coming up, and see if you have any questions regarding our presentation for next. Just the, like, the, looking at the work plan, what, what's coming up and see if you have any questions regarding our presentation for next. Month.
Well, next month, the presentation is from LTD. It's more of an informational session about, um. Basically, last year, uh, LTD did a huge engagement process to how they could change and improve their transit system. Now they're integrating those recommendations and so they want to come share about what those changes are and. Um, so it's more informational, but if. To ask. Or to, not to ask, that you would like to ask that I can help get to them so they can cater their presentation to your interests.
You can email them. Dennis.
Um, oh, I thought we were soliciting question. Um, just a quick update that, um, one, uh, with Danielle's help. Um, we had an awesome presentation to do at the event this weekend and thank you to those folks who made the event happen. Um, and we're well prepared for tabling summer. Um, one of the things we ran into, we ended up, two of us were. Actually available when it came down to actually doing the event. So if we're going to table summer and I won't be here summer because I will age out, but I'm going to try to do a schedule. It will take a commitment for commissioners who are willing to table to make it happen. Danielle finalized a really good presentation material. Um, and a simple way to get feedback from folks by, you know, asking questions and see what they answered. Um, so just, you know, think ahead. Are you willing and able to commit to doing an event or two? Through the summer for tabling that neighborhood association.
And by presentation, he means a spin the wheel game.
It's fun. Um, it'd be great if you could send out an email. In the interim with all the dates, just so we can like start thinking about it now.
How many do you have in your calendar?
Um, well, I'm looking at mostly repeat. People said they were back. There was five, I think.
Four, five. Five events.
I think five. That's my best recollection. I have to look at the list again. We weren't able to do, um, uh, um, Bethel last time because. Everybody who potentially was going to do it had conflict, but that would be the first one coming in June, all the way out till September. And but the other piece that's a little question mark, I've heard that what happens on budgets for neighborhood associations is going to. Impact what association schedules summer events or not. Um, but we could look at a tentative schedule, recognizing that that's tentative.
Laura, Climate Friendly Landscape Committee will have something coming in the next pack. Not quite done, but you'll get something to review.
Great. And thanks, Dennis. And Dennis also presented to Southeast Neighbors.
Right, without the pictures.
Without, yeah, and sitting, sitting in the Y.
Just want you to know, you can still be a volunteer, even if you're not a commissioner.
Yeah, the Y M C, because they couldn't get into the city buildings.
I was picturing like, I don't know.
We were scheduled to be at Hilliard Community Center, but it was blocked. Steph, who was supposed to open, it was not there.
Yeah.
The neighborhood was more, the leaders were more exceptional.
So with the extra time, are there any questions for LTD? Those questions have been super helpful, by the way, to presenters when you generate a list, so.
Can you say again what they're coming to talk about?
Yeah, so last year they did a big system review, they called it, where they, they solicited feedback and did a bunch of. Outreach to like, what can we do to make our buses better, our transit system better? And now they're implementing a lot of the recommendations that I heard, so they want to come share what those changes are.
My question would be, I mean, how much of an increase in the, um, population in a particular area has them review their route?
What's that?
How much of a population increase in a particular area might take a, you know, revision? I mean, I wonder what their kind of tipping point is for a change. Potential ridership.
I think all my questions would be covered in what they're likely to present.
Like, what are the changes?
What are the changes? What are, um. You know, what are the things that they think will most. Improve ridership, increase ridership.
Yeah, always my same question I ask them every single time I ever go to an LTD presentation is what? Is the, if any, is there a plan for public transportation to and from the airport? That's my favorite.
I guess the community groups ask that a lot.
Yeah, for sure. I guess.
What hours would they go to the airport?
I would like to know what the update is on their, um. Percentage of electric vehicles, stuff I think it's pretty high, but I'm.
I think that'd be a great, I, it'd be good to have them talk about their experience using those electric vehicles. Um, because they were one of the first organizations, I think, to roll those. That type of technology out of the region.
Yeah, I was wondering about, um, buses and school schedules. Like what, like do they run, like. I, there's a bus route that's always almost going to get cut going till my kids go to school and a lot of kids take that bus, but I think the rest of it. Part of the day, it's not used that much. So just wondering if there's any. Focus around getting kids just to enter from school, to in school bus.
Because one would think, because they get, the high school kids get the bus pass with their ID. Because there's no. Yeah, but it works for, it's the same deal for the high school because they, there is no bus at south. They don't have buses, so if you have to get there on your own or you take. The city bus. And so that's always an issue, like. Which was one of the Amazon, that Amazon bus where we, it was going to go away and. It came back.
Yeah, just wondering.
Yeah, it's a similar situation. Cool, that's a good list. Let's see. Sorry, things got like all jumbled around at the end. I apologize, but we, we made it happen. But, um, thank you very much and I'll adjourn.